Okay, welcome to the Village of Wappingers Falls Monthly Regular Meeting of the Board and the Mayor for today, Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. We'll begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start off tonight, I would like to ask the Board to pass a formal recognition for two developers and residents of the Village of Wappingers Falls who have been instrumental in the revitalization of our central business district. They came here 22 years ago and purchased three buildings on East Main Street that were in desperate need of repair and renovation, and they renovated those buildings, got businesses inside them, and they were, you know, among the first new businesses coming to the central business district, which we now call the Village Center. Of course, we always had the restaurants like The Arena, we had the Wagon Wheel Pizza, many longstanding businesses that still are there today, but this time period represented a move towards renovation and revitalization, which really started that long ago. Since those three buildings have been worked on, the cousins Jeff Barisha and Mr. Elmi Barisha have purchased more buildings together and separately, and there's a total of eight buildings in the Village of Wappingers Falls which have been renovated. Some of them were in very bad shape, and one of them is still yet to be renovated, but I do think that it's appropriate to acknowledge the good work that they've done and the village with a resolution in recognition of that. And so I would like to ask the Board if they might want to present that. We would prepare it after this resolution is passed and then maybe have a group of us present it at their grand opening, which should be coming up for Patsy's Pizzeria. So, Matt, do you want to say anything as the Economic Development Liaison? You're muted, though, Scott.
Elmi and company took a chance with us a long time ago, revitalized those buildings, and we've prospered through the years. I think that they've done a remarkable job when they do projects, they do quality projects, and they really, really care about the village. So I think it's wonderful that we're going to acknowledge that tonight. You're muted, Matt.
That being said, could we have a motion to pass a resolution honoring the work, the good work that they've done in the revitalization of the Village of Wappingers Falls?
I'll make it.
In a second?
Gladly, second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, as we get ready to find out more about the date of an official grand opening or other such ceremony that they would like to have, I would like to make that available to them in public at that time, so we'll pass it tonight and get that ready to go out. Okay, are there any other announcements? Any other special events that anybody would like to bring up at this time coming up? I think we have some concerts.
We have a concert, I think it's the Live 24th Board in the park, Mizzou Park. I think it's called, I forgot the name. Cindy's coming on later, but I know there was a concert coming up at the end of the month.
Okay, good.
So we're going to try to add social distance at first.
Very good. Okay, any other announcements? If there's no other, I'd like to ask our clerk, John Corrige, if he would do the roll call.
Okay, Mayor Alexander.
Here.
Trustee Marka John.
Here.
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Kimmornik.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Yes.
Trustee Panessa, absent. Trustee Lamars.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Okay, so I'm going to bring up the agenda, but before I do that, I'd like to ask if we could get a motion to approve the June 10th and June 24th, 2020 Village Board Meeting minutes?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
And that's seconded by trustee Marka John?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we have one other amendment to make to the past. Can you guys see the agenda?
I gotta print it out myself.
Okay. So we do have an amendment. John, do you want to talk to us about the amendment?
The amendment is from the April 29th meeting where my system went down again toward the end of it, and I missed that one. And I want to add that into the minutes that were approved for 4/29/20. Can I have a motion to amend the minutes?
I'll make it.
In a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda, can I get a motion from the Finance Committee to pay bills as per approved warrants?
I'll make it.
And that was trustee Huber?
Right.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kimmornik, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda, I'd like to ask the attorney to talk to us about this item.
Okay, what you have before you is a resolution adopting discrimination and harassment policy and establishing a complaint form and compliance officers in the village. New York State has come out with a model anti-harassment and sexual harassment policy that includes a complaint form for employees to report allegiance, and it's a sexual harassment or any type of harassment. And Nikon had actually given us a sample template by which we could adopt, and it was an update of our previous policy. So we had formulated a policy a couple of years ago, but we're now updating it to be in compliance with Nikon's recommendations and Nymer's recommendations as well, and we're doing that at this particular point in time, and that is what you have before you. So basically, this should be disseminated to all department heads, and if there's an issue, you know, it should be posted conspicuously if there's an issue. Village Clerk Cars and myself have been designated as point people for, you know, the origination of complaints.
I sent a copy to everyone today.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been on there.
John, I think you should, when you do pass this out to all the department heads, you should get a log book out and put it in a folder with signatures from the department heads acknowledging receipt of it.
Okay, yep.
I would also suggest that this also go on our website as well. So Todd can take care of that.
All right.
Okay, so are there any questions about the policy? I'll read it in a second, but if there's no questions, are you ready for me to read it?
You mean, you're going to read the whole policy or just the resolution?
Resolution, excuse me, I'm sorry.
We sent the policy a couple of weeks ago, but yeah.
I meant the resolution.
The policy went to all the trustees.
Okay, and your sign-off book, John, should include trustees and myself.
Okay.
Okay, the following resolution will be introduced and seconded, and reads, whereas pursuant to Section 296 of the New York State Executive Law, the Village of Wappingers Falls must formulate a discrimination and harassment policy and complaint form which is in compliance with the New York State model policy, and whereas the village previously adopted a sexual harassment policy on October 10th, 2018 by Resolution Number 201809, and now desires to update their policy in accordance with Nymer's recommendations, now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Wappingers adopts the Village of Wappingers Falls policy against discrimination and harassment, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof as the official discrimination and harassment policy of the village, and be it further resolved that the village shall provide a copy of this policy along with the attached complaint form within five days of its adoption by the village board, and be it further resolved that the village's compliance officers are the village attorney and the village clerk, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. So for that resolution, could I get a motion?
I will make it.
In a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kimmornik, all those, and then I'll do a roll call.
Who made the motion?
Scott Davis.
And trustee Kimmornik, seconded.
Yep.
And I'm going to do a roll call. Kevin Huber?
Aye.
Billy Marka John?
Aye.
Ronnie Kimmornik?
Aye.
With the record show that Mary Panessa is absent. Scott Davis?
Aye.
Brian Lammers?
Aye.
Okay, and I will say aye as well. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the village is in the process of closing on the loan that we have with the Environmental Facilities Corporation. We are closing on that loan before we have actually finished the work. The estimated completion amount would be $4,028,000, and the village is doing all the necessary paperwork to get this loan closed, and it includes with it, because the entire amount is $7,028,000 that is expected that it would be, it also includes a $3 million grant for which we do not have to pay neither principal or interest on. So the village actually did about $6 million worth of work so far, and it's expected that it will be doing another $1 million in the next fiscal year in the 2021 time period. So in order to close this loan, we need to amend our seeker for the environmental review. It has to do with the utility replacements project, and it updates it, and the reason that it updates will be made evident as I read this resolution.
Mayor, before you get into that, I just wanted to just bring to the attention of the Board that the Village Board was lead agency back in 2016 in this particular matter. And from a quick look, it looks like this, there's been a scaling back of the original plan from Contract Four to what we have before us, which is Contract Five. Contract Five looks like there's no water tower that's going to be proposed, that's the only difference. So we have to declare ourselves lead agency once again so that we can circulate, and you know, we're going to be hearing on this amended amendment to the application shortly. So, but before we can hear on the amendment, we have to circulate.
So the reasons for the change in the storage options for the Village of Wappingers Falls is that the village was able to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Wappinger, where it was able to agree with the town that if for fire emergency or maintenance purposes it needed to turn on, or other emergency purposes such as the need for more, any need for more water, that the village would be allowed to turn on the connection with the town of Wappinger and use water that has a much higher pressure from their water storage tanks east of Route 9. It's also the fact that the village is working on increasing pressure and looking at changes that might be made either by the village or a developer to the Delverne Avenue tank that would increase the pressure over on that side. So the resolution, are there any questions about that? I think this is all stuff we've talked about in concept over the last two years as we've worked on making this agreement with the town of Wappinger and making these changes. Are there any questions from the Board?
None for me.
Okay, so I'll read the resolution. Whereas in 2016, the village undertook various utility improvements known as Contract Four, and was declared lead agency for the purposes of Seeker, and whereas it is the intent of the village to assume the role of lead agency for the purposes of conducting a seeker assessment for Contract Five, which consists of a water connection to the town in accordance with the intermunicipal water supply and transmission agreement with the town dated July 24th, 2019, and whereas Part One of a full environmental assessment form has been completed for the project reviewed by the village and will be circulated to all interested and involved agencies for purposes of establishing the village as lead agency in accordance with Six NYCRR, Part 617.6B. Now therefore be it resolved that the village of Wappingers Falls will send said Part One of the environmental assessment form to the interested and involved agencies undercover of a notice of intent to establish lead agency letter for purposes of establishing lead agency status under Seeker, and be it further resolved that the village clerk and attorney are hereby authorized to take all actions, serve all notices, and complete all agreements required to give full force and effect to this determination. The involved agencies would be the Village Water Board, the Town of Wappinger Town Board, Dutchess County Department of Community and Behavioral Health, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. For that motion, could we have a vote? Oh, excuse me, for that vote, could we have a motion? Or questions?
I'll make it. We've talked about this many times.
Okay, so could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Huber?
Aye.
Trustee Marka John?
Here.
Trustee Kimmornik?
Aye.
And trustee Panessa is absent. Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Lammers?
I'll abstain since this happened way before my appointment to the Board, so I don't feel I know enough about it to run with you.
We would like to, before I say aye, I'd also just like to thank the town of Wappinger for all of their good work that they've been doing with us on this. This contract seeks to, this project and the contract seeks to increase intermunicipal cooperation and protect both municipalities with this interconnection in the event of an emergency or needed maintenance for either side. So I will say aye, and I think that's enough to pass, that is enough to pass. So at this time, I'd like to, just to say that that's all we need to say for that. So the next item on the agenda is I have been working with the attorney for the village who is representing us and the issue for Mary Ross Park and the licensing of a use of Mary Ross Park, not sole use, but a use of Mary Ross Park by The Vinyl Room, which is a business that's located adjacent to Mary Ross Park, and we are, we took all the comments that were made at the last meeting, and we put them into the contract the way they are, and our attorney is talking to their attorney, and they will come back to us with any changes or any issues that they need us to think about or look at. The, in the meantime, the business has started to look into what it would take with other state agencies such as the Liquor Authority to determine what other needed actions he might need to take and the village might need to take. Are there any questions about Mary Ross Park this time?
No.
Any new comments that anybody wants to make about Mary Ross Park?
Great idea, Mayor.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you, if you're watching this on YouTube, you should be able to access the Village webpage and find the Zoom link, and click on that link and make comment about this. This item is still ongoing, but if you would like to make a comment about Mary Ross Park and what's going on with this, please go on Zoom and just let us know that you are interested in making a comment about this item. In the meantime, we will continue to move through the rest of the agenda. There will be an opportunity between each item that we're talking about, as well as an opportunity at the end of the meeting for residents to make comments, as there always is. So if you would like to make a comment about this item or any other items that are on the agenda, what you need to do is click onto the Village of Wappingers Falls webpage at wappingersfallsny.gov, and look for the Zoom link for the meeting dated July 8th, 2020, and that will bring you to this location online, and you will be able to make a comment after you're recognized. Okay, so if there's no comments from the Board, we'll keep going. So we have an item on here from the Fire Committee, so would somebody, Kevin, is this you to talk about the Fire Committee?
Yes, I was talking to Chief Van Tassel, and there are new mini rescue trucks that we purchased. They're looking to use the restricted fund, fire fund, not taxpayer money, but restricted fund. Look, and they, you want to take $12,000 of it to purchase airbags. Those airbags are used in rescue operations for, say, a car fell on somebody, we can use the bags to lift up the cars, to pull the patient out, or like a concrete wall, some sort of stuff like that, something heavy where we can use these bags. They would like to purchase these bags, and we're just looking for approval tonight to use the restricted fund.
Okay, so you, and you talked, you spoke with Chief Van Tassel?
Chief Van Tassel, Chief Vincent, yeah.
Okay, very good. Are there any, any comments from the Board?
I have, just have a question. Where's the money coming from, for the funds to purchase the airbags?
They have a fire restricted fund.
Okay, I think you might need to explain a little bit more.
The way I take it is, any new construction, they have to pay a, I guess, a fire fee, and we can, it goes, it goes for part-to-part use only, for only equipment in this. So instead of taking out of their budget line, they would take it out of their restricted
Okay, so this does not come from taxpayer monies from the tax levy, it comes from taxpayers who have developed property in the Village of Wappingers Falls and somewhere in the process been asked to pay and agreed to pay a fire fee. So could you tell us how long the airbags last for?
I really don't know the exact how long. We have them on the rescue up at Station Two, 6855, and I've been a member 20 years, and they've been on, they've been in service ever since.
Okay, good, all right.
They last a long time.
Okay, good.
And there's different, different size bags. They go from a little rectangle to a big, to a big square, probably 24 by 24 inch square. So they just, you inflate them with the, with air from a stop bottle, or so it'll be our breathing apparatus, and there's a regulator that we can push a button to go up, push a button to go down, and push a button to deflate off.
Okay.
I have a quick, how many of these bags would this, would this purchase cover?
I think we, I'm not sure how many bags we, this purchase would cover, but I think we have on the rescue, six bags total on our rescue up at Station Two.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I didn't get the exact number, how many they wanted. They didn't tell me, nor did I ask, I'm sorry about that. But they're only, they're only asking for the 12,000 of it, and they, they went through the purchasing agent, purchasing orders, they did, they got three coats, and they're going with the coat that's $12,000.
I have a question.
Yes.
Those bags, now, do you need it in both firehouses? Aren't the, would the bags be used between the two? Do they have to have a separate ones for the other firehouse?
Well, I would, I would say yes. It would be nice to have them on the other rescue truck also, just in case this one's on another call and that one gets called to it, or one can free up from another, or I mean, if we're out at a structural fire and the other rescue truck is available, they can go to a car accident, or a person pinned between the wall and the ground, or you know, concrete wall or ground, or you know, I would say they definitely need it. I mean, they, we have, we have the jaws of life up here. I mean, they, they, we have, we have the jaws of life up here, up at Station 2, and they have the jaws of life down there. So we're trying to mimic each other, just in case one doesn't get out and the other one does, you know.
Okay, are there any other questions? Comments? And I'm not, I keep trying to look at people. Um. Okay, if there's no other comments, is somebody ready to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the $12,000 for the purchase of the airbags for the new rescue truck.
Okay, is there a second?
A sec.
Seconded by trustee Brian Lammers. Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, the next item on the agenda is last month, we approved the purchase of a, of playground equipment that we went through a public process to select over the, over many months. And the, the total value of that equipment is $120,000. We're at the point where we need to put down a deposit. There's a $100,000 grant. It means that $20,000 will come from other sources. And what we'd like to ask the board is if we can use restricted recreation funds. And trustee Lammers, these are similar to restricted fire funds, but they have to do with recreation equipment. And I think we talked about this earlier today. So we have the use of these funds and we would like to go ahead and make this purchase with this deposit and get this contract to them. So I'd like to ask the board if we could get a motion for this or any discussion, if you want to start with that. If there's no discussion, could we have a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Davis. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda, we are in receipt of a resignation letter from one of our police officers who's named here on our agenda. So I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the resignation of Sergeant Martin effective July 27, 2020.
Make it.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Huber. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I would like to thank Sergeant Martin for his service here. And the next item on the agenda is, I think this is over, but you might want to talk about anything that's come up. Trustee Davis, about the List Road signs pilot program?
Okay, so we got one, one of the signs up. We're finalizing the location of the second sign. It's up and running. Kudos to Commissioner Burke and the folks in dispatch because they got it. It was put up on Thursday, I believe, or Friday, and it was up and running on Monday. So, and that was contacting the company and getting it initiated. And then through the police department, we're gonna determine what data that's gonna start capturing. And then, once we get the second location, we're just finalizing that now. Hopefully that'll be secured tomorrow. Well, we'll get the second one up as soon as possible, but the first one's up and running. It's, as you come off Route 9 on List Road. So if anybody, anybody wants to go take a look. Okay.
So trustee Davis, could you talk to us, or, or maybe the commissioner Burke could talk to us about the kinds of data that it captures?
In fact, I have a training schedule tomorrow afternoon with the company to walk me through on how to reset the times and, and the data it collects. It'll also email us all the data when it does. So if we set it up for like a monthly thing, it could send us a report on what the speed and volume of vehicles on the road was. Right now, it's set for 25 miles an hour. At 30, it changes colors to let people know that, you know, it's gone above the speed limit. And it's also set for another warning at 35, that if people are in real violation of the speed limit on the street. But I don't know if anyone can get up to that speed.
I was gonna say, if I may interject, while Walter's on there, it, it's gonna be, it would be extremely hard for someone to get up to that speed. And I hope they never do. But I'm sure after you get your class this week, you'll have a better idea of what data we can actually, actually can capture.
Yes, as soon as I take this class, I'll be able to report that better on how, on the operation of the, of the speed sign.
Okay, and we have discussed, it's entirely possible to move this sign and it's something that we could do and we would consider if it was prudent to do so. So we'll keep watching what happens with this sign in this location and determine what we would do next with it.
Mayor, can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
I was talking to Pete last week and he has another location set up whenever, when, when, when we're ready to be moved, to move the sign because they can be moved. They should be moved. The other location would be on Clap Avenue by Bain Park. That's another hot zone. Trustee Penessa has talked to Pete about that, about that location.
Yeah, the second, the second location that we've been working on for quite some time, if it doesn't come through, then we'll concede it to Clap Avenue because that's definitely a problem spot.
Oh, definitely. And once these signs are up there and people start obeying the speed limit on there, we could bounce it around and we could put one back on, or we could put one on Clap Avenue and possibly other places through the village. So they are movable and they are, or not like.
They take us, what they call a sonnet tube. It's a big cardboard tube and they fill it with concrete and put bolts in it. So the cost is not that expensive, probably 75 bucks to, to set the thing up. And then, once it's set up, we could actually find other spots to put them and move them around if we want to. The, the highway did a great job constructing it. It was, I, I was there when they were constructing. It wasn't a lot to it. It's a matter of getting the batteries put in and getting the panel put in place to where it's gonna capture the sun correctly. But we could, we could actually, if we wanted to be proactive, we could determine some spots to put those now and maybe, maybe we do move them after a while. So the only bad thing about the List Road one is that where it ended, the, the first one ended up was that it is relatively close to Route 9. So if you're coming southbound on 9, you make the right on Route, on List Road, you really, really have to be a maniac to get down the street to make that thing start flashing at you. But the good part about it is, is when you come around the corner, off of Route 9, it's in your face. You see it and it definitely should be a heads up for folks to caution, shows them their speed limit. So we'll just have to watch it real close. But the second one doesn't work by Friday and we don't have a spot to do that. I'll concede it to Clap Avenue. Like you said, it's all, our trustee Huber said it's already in place. So just a matter of putting the second one there. So if they give me till Friday, we'll, we'll, we'll end that one. And we'll put it on clap if it doesn't work out on List. And the other thing I want to just remind folks, because I, I was put under a little scrutiny at last village board meeting. I did that project because it was, the folks on the street petitioned to have that done. And then through a couple of ward meetings, we decided, our List Road actually, meetings that we opened to the public, we decided that that was an option, to purchase these signs and put them up there. Had nothing to do with me. I went by the recommendation to the folks on the, on the street and that's why they were put up there. So if it's better, because we have a larger problem somewhere else in the village, then that comes first. Then safety's really the issue. So just want to make sure that was clear. I didn't do it because I'm the, this third ward, List Road trustee.
Okay, um, good. So I, is there, I think we'll move on. And so we would like to go into committee reports right now. And we have our new police commissioner, Walter Burke, with us here tonight. And so I'd like to welcome Walter Burke to the village of Wappingers Falls, where he's been for, he's been many, a few years here before and he's back again. So Walter, you want to lead us through the report and as well as give us an update of what's going on with the department?
So I, is there, I think we'll move on. And so.
Any questions?
Reports right now. And we have our new police commissioner, Walter Burke, with us here tonight. And so I'd like to welcome Walter Burke to the village.
So Mayor, do you want me to actually read the figure, the report from the last month? Because I can't see it on the computer here.
Oh, yes.
I, I had the numbers and mayor and board, I compared June of 2020. And next to it, you'll see to the far right, 2019 June. So last year, you can compare to this year's.
Okay, so do you see that, Walter?
Yeah, now I can see it now. So, you know, the usual calls that we have are, you know, pretty much standard, you know, burger alarms, 80 cases. Assaults in 2020 so far is down. We had two in, in 2019. Civilian complaints against the department. There's only been one this year. As far as personnel, we're down as far as what we had last year, but we've been able to maintain covering all of our tours. Larcenies are up this year, a little bit more than they were last year. In fact, we've had a couple of cars, cars up on, off Main Street that have been left unlocked at night and somebody's been going through. I think there was like three or four cars that people went through. So everybody should always lock their doors if they have any type of, they're just looking for small change and small items in the car. So make sure your car's always locked up there or anywhere's in the village. That's pretty much it for, for that report.
Okay, are there any questions on the report? From the trustees?
No, much, much, the numbers are headed in the right direction. It's, it looks really good. Really happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, and your total calls for service are up very.
For this year?
Yeah, well, for.
Well, you can see that the tickets are starting to rise up. So, you know, we're, we're doing more stops now. You know, last couple of months, we really haven't been doing too much stops because of what's going on. But, yeah, you know, the calls at the end of the year really come out about the same every year. You know, might be a couple hundred difference, but it's not much.
But it, it looks like it's possible that the pandemic is making you get more calls, maybe because there's more people at home? Is that?
Well, 80, we've gotten a lot of 80 cases. It's gone up. So that increases. But, you know, as far as like domestics, they're a little bit up this year, but not, not that, not, not too much of a difference from last year.
So I know you and I had talked about a couple of other things and you might have talked to some of the other trustees about some other issues. Do you want to bring up any of those at this point?
Um, well, we could talk about the meeting we had the other day about the domestic violence. We're, you know, we're gonna try to increase our, our activity in the, in the community as far as making people aware of what we can do to help them if there's any domestic violence in the community. I've appointed an officer to act as liaison for any, any times that reports come in with domestic violence, to follow up with the person, to make sure everything's good, if they're, if seeking counseling or whatever, we can advise them on. So we're looking to, you know, to increase that because our, our domestic violence, our domestic calls are usually increased, seem to be increasing every year. But in the department, you know, we're, we're doing training to this week on de-escalation. Officers are watching an hour-long video that's put out by the line of duty and it's really, tells them how to, you know, bring a person's, they get on a scene and the person's like really agitated. They, they can use certain type of wording and actions to bring their, them down so that they can hopefully not turn into a situation that doesn't need to happen. So that training's going on right now and that's about the only big thing we have going on in the department.
Okay, good. So the reason we talked about domestic violence in particular was because once again, the village of Wappingers Falls was noted in a survey as having the highest number of cases per capita in any municipality in Dutchess County. And so we know that this is an issue of great concern for us and we're, and we're trying to get some control over it and see if there's something that we can offer to the residents to address that, that high number that we have here. So I'd like to thank our commissioner for working on that issue. The commissioner and I also discussed looking at two other issues possibly and also determining what other issues might need to be looked at. And I think we had identified opiates and addiction as being a major issue here in the village that causes great harm to our, the village families, village residents in terms of other associated problems that go along with addition, addiction. And then the third item that we talked about was elder care and how we could look out for the village's higher-than-average elderly population that it has and make sure that those, that segment of the population is being watched out for in a special way. So I'm glad that the police department is working on those issues and we look forward to getting more information as we, as the commissioner and his department dig into those issues deeper. Are there any questions for Walter?
No, just like to thank him for the job that he's doing and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I second that. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions for Walter, Walter could stay for the rest of the meeting or he could go enjoy the rest of tonight and we could go on to other departments and catch up with Walter later. So if you want to stay for a while and just check out quietly, that's, that's fine, whichever one is good for you, but we're gonna keep going.
I think I'll stay on for a little while.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next committee report we have coming up is the Economic Development Corp-, excuse me, Economic Development Committee. Scott?
Well, we had some transition in the committee, so we're, we're gonna go for July's meeting. We didn't have one last month, so there's been a little change over there. So nothing for this month.
Okay. Trustee Huber, you want to talk to us about what's going on with Highway?
Alright, Highway had a pretty busy month. Done quite a few things. I've got four pages of things. And I just marked out a couple keynote things. They're back to, number one, they're back to regular shifts. All guys are working as of 6/11. So that's a, that's a good thing. We can start really getting some work done in the village. And they've been working down, they were working down last, I think it was last week, I saw them down at the village dump or staging area. Cutting the grass down there, trimming the trees and brush on that fence line. And they, cleaning out the pump stations. Maybe you saw, they, they helped the recreation out or parks. They, they hung some sanitizers stations up in Bets Park, Mizzier Park, and I think down Temple. They, they were assembling some garbage cans. We got some new garbage cans, the EDC got it. They assembled them and put them along East Main Street and West Main Street. And they were installing some signs, you know, some street signs. But they had a pretty busy month. Kudos to these guys. These guys do work hard for us. That's all I have right now.
Okay, and you did you talk about the staging area work that they've been doing?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Uh, so they've been able to, I noticed there and I'd just like to thank them, they really got a. Area of the village that we're trying to get control over, which is where the staging area, which used to be a dump. Literally, and. It had a lot of overgrown overgrown vegetation and the entryway and they've really done a lot, a great job of. Reorganizing what's located there and putting it into good tiles and keeping it very neat, I think. I've taken a couple of walks back there over the last couple of weeks and I was really happy with the progress that we've made. Thought they were doing great and I also know that they had done some maintenance along some of the sidewalk. Paths where the village has lots of property and they had cut back some of the vegetation in those locations, so. Just like to especially thank them for the this good work that they're doing and thank you Kevin and everybody who's up in the committee for looking out for us.
I'll move on to fire now.
Okay.
So for the month of June, Fire Department had answered nineteen alarms. The like I said before, the new rescue trucks in, that's been lettered. I'm assuming the radios, they got, they got reporting new radios in them, so I'm assuming maybe by the end of the month. New rescue truck will be in service, I'm not sure on that just yet, but I'm just taking a guess, because it seems like it's been moving right along those guys down there. And that's it on the fire. And if you don't mind, could I jump the lake, this way I don't have to take two breaks?
Okay, go ahead.
On the lake. We've got six people that are running the weed dew. And may not look like we've been doing anything out there, but we've been doing stuff out there, there's been no rain. And it's just, the rain helps out moving the weeds as we cut them or push them. Out into the channel or, you know, along, if we're out in the middle, maybe not the middle, middle, because we can't get there because you the sandbarred us out there. And the water's been, I I think the lake level's down three or four feet off the shorelines, I can tell, where we keep the weed dew. So it's really shallow out there in some parts, so the guys have been working out there. And. That's all I, that's all I have right now. Cindy's here for recreation, so I did see her on.
We'll go to Cindy in a second, but I just wanted to ask you, um, is it taking, it takes a while for the volunteers to get trained, right?
Yes, yep, I've taken. Four of them out, I think Brian Brian took the other two out or the other one out and. I spent a couple hours with them, they go out and I I I strongly urge them to go out and just get yourself familiarized with the machine before you really get into it. You know, this this way you can, you know what you're getting into and know how to handle it and get yourself into a situation, you can get yourself out of the situation. I showed them how to get themselves out of the situation if they ever get into a situation down there where you get stuck or. If the machine shuts off, what to look for. So because if you're out there and you're stuck, you're the only one out there and you you got to hold yourself back. And the building jam, you know, then you can call for help, call the Fire Department. Yeah, they'll help us out, Fire Department has a boat where we can come out and get you. If it's if it's that case, but let's hope not, nothing happens like that and these guys are, I think, doing a good job out there. What I've seen, I I've tried to go out a couple of times and the machine's missing, it's out.
Okay, well, the reason I bring it up is I've got some more residents who would like to volunteer and if. There's a way to get them out there, if you can get them more training, let me know because. There is a lot of desire to get out there from a few people and like I could give you. Uh, I could start giving you some extra names as times become available for you to get some extra people out there, but I understand that it. Takes time to train them and that we want them to be trained the right way, so.
Yeah.
Let me know.
Changing stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Kevin. Cindy, do you want to talk to us about recreation?
Uh, yeah, sure, um, so, uh, just to give a quick report, we have had some complaints come in about the garbage issues in the parks. Uh, in particular areas and so I've been working with the Highway Department to make sure that we get garbage cans out there. And make sure that they're getting emptied on a regular basis, um, whoops, I'm sorry, I have to pay attention, you're sending me notes. So, uh, you know, that's in place and we're trying to work on it as best we can, um, we also are going to try and address some of these issues. With some more signage, um, so we're working that out right now to figure out what's the best way for us to post what we would like. The people in our parks to be doing with their garbage, uh, you're finding that in many cases, there's excess. Residential garbage being put into some of the containers we have, so that's something that we need to come up with a plan to. Get not to happen on a regular basis, uh, so one of the things that I've been exploring is coming up in the anti-littering campaign. That we will start putting out through social media first and then, um, we'll use other methods of getting it out to the public as well, but. We'll launch it off of our social media platform first. Concerts, I announced that, you know, we were very lucky to have be having two concerts in the Mizzou Park, one is on July the twenty fourth. And one is on August twenty first, um, I've been putting, trying to share on Facebook. The band that is playing both of these concerts will be social distancing and they've been putting out, uh, they had their first concert. On Sunday, I believe, and they had posted onto Facebook pictures of them social distancing and. What a different way of having a concert is, so I'm planning for those concerts, we will be marking out the parks. For on to remind people to social distance and put out some reminders as to what we are expecting them to wear in the park if they're going to be. Sitting down and listening to the concert, um, they do not have to wear a mask, however, if they decide to move around and go someplace else, they are going to have to be wearing a mask. Um, for everybody's safety. Uh, at the workshop meeting, I had talked a little bit about our exploring the possibility of putting a small pocket park. Into the Hillside Avenue area up by the old water tower, I don't really have any more to report on that yet, it's. It is something that, you know, we're looking into a bunch of different things as far as fencing. What kind of field do we want this part to have, what kind of equipment we would have, we did have a donation of equipment from the Sheaf Road PTA. So that will be one of the pieces that will go in up there as we move forward on this. Um, there has been a an outreach by Wapinners Rises to provide to residents. Information on when they where they could volunteer in the community and we have had a couple of people. Email me through the Rec Department, uh, offering their services as volunteers, um, our policy has been to only really. Put out volunteer opportunities when I need volunteers, so, um, that's what I'm trying to let people know and that we are creating a database with. Their contact information and we will reach out to them with volunteer opportunities as they arise. We don't have too many activities going on right now, so there really isn't too much of a need for it, also have been working with. John Parch to determine what kind of. Coverage we need as far as insurance coverage, what kind of information we need to get from volunteers, disclaimers and stuff to allow people to be. Doing certain activities that we'd like them to help us with, um, I think that's just about everything that that I can report, um. I I do have a question because I I thought maybe EDC would bring up, uh, there there is, um. An effort to put some flags up on the lamppost, so I don't know if they're planning on saying something about that, I know that there there was a. One put up up by Stefano's so that people could see what what they look like and what they're planning on doing, but I I my, I thought they were coming to the board tonight with a. More extensive proposal on it.
Cindy, I.
Do you know about that?
A- after after we get done talking, we do the trustees, if trustees want to talk, I'd like to talk about that. I know a little more about that flag, I can help.
Okay, I just I just know that they, you know, I thought the intent was that they were going to be bringing it to the board tonight, that was what I was.
Well, I was, they asked me to bring it to the board, I can bring it to the board now if you would like, or I can wait till after we're done here.
Okay.
You want me to do it now?
That's all I have to report, if anybody has any questions, I can answer. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, thank you Cindy.
Mayor, I could touch on the flags that we hung up by Stefano's and I sent pictures to the board last night. If you if you want to talk about it now.
Yep.
All right, so, uh, last night Trent Atkinson and I hung a flag up in front of Stefano's on the new light pole, I think it's. It looks pretty cool, I like the idea and Trent has come up with a plan and I I again, another great idea and and. Maybe maybe the village can sponsor a couple of flags itself, but the way he's looking to do it is is. You would buy the flag online on, I I want to say it's on Amazon and. You would buy the flag and you can have it shipped to your house or you can ship it to Trent's town, his address. And we have a and we we will, we'd hang them on the light poles as we get them in. And I I mean, I I think we have fifteen light poles as of right now through the village and there might be a total of thirty altogether, I would say. Might be wrong on that number, so when I was hanging the flags last night with Trent, he was saying, he was talking, maybe going. Every other light pole with an American flag, this way it's not every light pole has an American flag on it. And maybe we can come up with something different on the other light pole that doesn't have the American flag, I'm not quite sure what we want to do yet, maybe, uh. There is one thing out there that Adam Orsola made up and I kind of like the idea, but I don't have the, I don't have it in front of me tonight where I can show anybody. But that he has a sticker, it's a village of Wapinners Hall sticker and it's red, white and blue and it's it's a pretty cool, I guess you would say logo. As you would say, I I I just like the print of it, it looks looks nice and it's something different that goes through the village and the flags are. I think will help us out, make 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 them light poles really stand out during the day, they stand out at night with the light because they're nice and bright and they're pretty. And I just think it'll make the going into the downtown area and going down West Main Street, make it look nice and and pop. So I mean, I don't know if the village board would be interested in sponsoring a flag or a couple of flags or whatever, I know there are, I think he paid like twenty six dollars for that one flag. So. I think it's a great idea and we want to do more. With that, with the light poles.
I kind of like the idea of having them all match. More than I I and maybe putting the something different in one location instead of every other pole. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I mean, it's it's something we can discuss, I mean, we definitely like to see more American flags on those poles, they they've been hung hanging or they've been. Almost up for almost a year now and really nothing's been on it and now we're into July and we're starting to do something, I mean, I think it'd be great. It looks nice.
So. If I may.
Sure.
The. How many total poles do we have, total number of poles?
As of right now, I think there's thirteen, I counted the other day, I I could be wrong on that number, but I'm pretty close to that number, I'm pretty sure it's thirteen, maybe fifteen tops.
I would imagine that, um, that would, if we open that up and people can buy them, I'm sure that that would go relatively quick.
I'm sure it would too.
So we would have to provide them with the information to go online or whatever they do to purchase them and how to get the flags to the right place, so. And the other thing is you don't want to oversell it so that you have more than thirteen being bought, because I'd probably buy one. The board's going to buy one, now we're down to eleven, there's one on there, so that's that's ten, so I could see it going relatively quick. We have to make sure that that's done correctly and to Matt's point about the, uh, the other, I mean, I I don't think that. Thirteen lamp posts is enough to put something else on there, I think that if you put the flags on there, I think it would probably make a really nice presence. It's not going to be overwhelming and who's going to argue with the flag, well, I shouldn't say that in today's day and age, but. I don't I don't think the flag is going to draw too many issues, so.
I don't think so either, but let me interact real quick, let me interact real quick, I'm not sure how many new light poles are going on West Main Street, maybe the mayor knows how many. Total is going to be on West Main, so I mean.
The number of what?
Well, they're they're supposed to start that pedestrian sidewalk project with new light, new lighting on West Main Street going up the hill from. Uh, Givens Avenue all the way to Church Street. Into Freddie Reese Park, so.
Yeah, so I don't I don't know exactly how many there would be there, or they, did you say that it's their twenty six dollars each?
Yeah, twenty six dollars each. He's got them on Amazon, I uh, I can get the, I can I can get the measurements from them, I I want to say. They're thirty inches long, I want to say, and maybe twenty four inches.
If it's Amazon, we should just take a picture of the page and put it out there and what's and then. Find a way to sign them up, you don't want to oversell it to where you got, you know.
I know you don't want a hundred of them, but you know, it's just it's a nice idea.
Oh, it's a great idea.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
Go ahead Cindy.
I I think, you know, I I think you should probably check with Trent because they might have already covered these costs already, um. So I I think that you you need to open a discussion with him because that that was what he led me to believe is that they already have. Enough money to purchase whatever flags they need for all the poles right now and any new poles coming in, and I can tell you for for a fact that I know we have more than thirteen right now.
It's thirteen or fifteen.
There's a loan on the bridge.
There you go.
So, um, you know, I I think you have to have a conversation with Trent and find out where he's at with this because. Um, I I just texted him about it back and forth and I I was led to believe that he already had the funding covered. And that this prototype was to give you guys a look and get your approval to put them up, um, that was, that was the last message I had from him, so, um.
Well, so what this tells me at this point is we're missing information, so if trustee Huber, if you're you're willing to pick up the baton on this, maybe we could just authorize you to see it through. I and and then also also. Also make sure that we account for the total number of poles once the tap project goes up the hill. And on the West Main Street so that if we're going to purchase them, we purchase them so they could go up right away, but I think one person should deal with it and. We should validate what Cindy just said and and make sure that there are, if there is enough money that they're allocated or if they purchased them or if there's enough flags right now. And there's no need to purchase flags, we just got to get them up.
I'll be in contact with Trent, uh, probably tomorrow morning and, uh, I'll get, I'll I'll get the information on the flags, I'll. I'll call, I'll reach out to Nancy or John, the engineers, and see how many light poles that are going on West Main Street. And we can go from there, I I think what we're just looking for tonight is the blessing from the board. For this group to purchase or do these flags on the poles. For the village.
So how did the flag, you 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 put the flags up with trustee, I mean, yes, you you put the flags up and had help putting them up?
Yeah, Trent and I hung the one in front of Stefano's last night, it was very easy.
So no safety issues, no safety issues there, no issue for.
We laddered the the light pole itself, we had to use an Allen key to take the brace, uh, the the pole off. With and it has a safety class also, and we put, you know, we took it all off, hit it on the ground and we put everything back onto the pole. Where the way we found it, this way everything's safe and it will not fall down on anybody.
And you're willing to see that project project through?
I'm definitely willing to see that project through, I'd like to see that project complete, I think it'll look nice to this village.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, it's only three hundred and thirty eight dollars to do all of them, so, um. I don't know. I mean, it's only three hundred and thirty-eight dollars to do all of them, so um, I don't know. So I don't, I mean, I'm fine with it as soon as they get them all and um, I don't have anything to say.
But, so I guess, I mean, do we, do we need a motion for the board to prove the flags to go up on the poles? Is that what we need?
I think we should. I mean, I think that would probably be a good idea as, as for the concept, you know, and for them to be allowed to put, be put up.
And I, I would like to make that motion that we allow the flags to go up there based on, and, and that Kevin, trustee humor, Huber will spearhead the project.
Are they, or do you know if they're donating the flags to us?
That's the concept I was taking. They're donating the flags to the village.
Yes.
They, they're sponsoring a flag. The person would be sponsoring a flag.
Cindy, and you said that you believe that they already have the flags in their possession?
I, I don't know if they have the flags in their possession. I know that my, my texting back and forth to Trent indicated that he had already gotten enough funding and that I don't know if he was having the people buy them themselves or whatever. So I think that's why you have to have a conversation with him. But my understanding was is that he felt that they had all the flags that they would need, not only for what poles we have right now, but also for the future poles that are going into West Main Street. And that um, they had already have somebody that is making, they're, they are just standard American flags. And what's happening is that a volunteer is sewing in another sleeve at the bottom of those flags so that they slide onto the poles. And I, I think he's got all the details worked out. So I mean, I think really you just need to prove it. I think it's, you know, it's a great idea to put something like that up there. Um, I know back last year when the poles first went in, um, the Business Association had also had a conversation with EDC about what was going up there. And they had, you know, they had some ideas that they wanted to do. So we backed off of the plan that we were suggesting, but I, you know, and it's a very similar type of thing. So I think you go ahead with it. I mean, they, you know, they seem to have organized enough. It seems like it's, you know, okay.
I think we're, we're beating it at this point, so um, I'll make a motion that the flags, we allow the flags to go um, up on the poles now. And that um, we, I don't know how we want to word this mayor, but want to allocate enough money to buy the flags that are for all thirteen poles if they're not already purchased.
I'll, I'll second it. And just let me jump on to Cindy's thing, how they purchase it. Uh, no money will be transferred to Trent's name. It, it's basically, you go on the website and I want to say it's on Amazon. I want to say he's getting them from Amazon. This flag came from Amazon. And you would purchase the flag yourself. You can either have it shipped to Trent's house or you can ship it to your house and deliver it to Trent's house. And he would then take it to the volunteer, her name is Ann. And she would sew the sleeve on the bottom to put it on that pole. So there's no money into anybody else, any hands. It's just basically you pay for it online and it, through Amazon and it goes through that way. And you can either bring it to Trent's house or mail it to Trent's house. And that's how that would work.
We can, we can post that on the, on the village website in person?
Just let me get, uh, let me get the information from, make sure it's definitely Amazon. He did say Amazon. I want to double check though.
Okay.
Uh, can I make, I'm, whoops, my, I'm speaker. I have to go back to my recreation report. I just had a text that I guess um, with regards to the hillside.
Cindy, hold on a second. We're in the middle of a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Scott, could you repeat the motion?
I make a motion that we allow the flags to go on the poles. And that we allow the purchase of the flags the way that trustee Huber laid it out. And that is they could buy the flag on Amazon. And we can get it to the person that's going to sew the flag and get them up on the poles for thirteen poles.
Okay, uh, so is, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Sorry Cindy.
Okay Cindy, you want to go back?
You're on mute.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I get confused as to what's going on on the Zoom stuff. So I mean, just needed to go back and reopen my rec report. I just had a text saying that um, the Sheath Road PTA is not going to be donating that piece of equipment to us. So that's off the table. I just wanted you to be aware of it. I wasn't aware of it until I got the text, so that's it.
Okay, uh. Okay, the next item is John Carriage. Do you want to talk to us about safety?
Okay, just up to date, update the board that two of my five members of the committee are no longer on the committee. That would be Lonto and Amanda Peebs. So I'll be looking for two more replacements. The PPE inventory is adequate in all departments at the moment. I found a contractor who will be hanging Lexan. That's a form of Plexiglas, if you don't know. Probably this weekend. So um, that will take care of the court. They are going to open up, and you probably read Sue O'Sullivan's report, or Sue Sullivan's report, that they're going to have court on the fourteenth. So the Plexiglas will need to be in place for the Lexan by then, and it will be. That's it.
Okay, any questions on uh, safety? You did some other stuff with Nightmare too.
For the past ten years, I've been saying I'm gonna do it.
Nightmare?
Or didn't you work on some other um, safety items as far as workplace violence?
Uh, yeah, we uh, that was the resolution tonight that we had earlier.
Oh no, I thought you did further work on the.
We already had, we already had all that in place. We held our annual training back in January. And um, each year now we coordinate with our comp carrier, Perma, who provides free of charge the training by a consultant for the entire village employees. And we, we did that then. And Nightmare is also offering up the same training, but we, we've already done it. And I'd like to stay with Perma. We've done it now two years in a row with them at the beginning of each year. And uh, you know, the contractor that they hired does a very thorough job. And for those who don't attend that training, do have an opportunity to do it online. And they, and we make sure they do do it online. And any new employees that are hired during the year also have to have that training shortly after they're hired. And that's in their hiring package as well.
Okay, and you did somewhat of a review of that just this week, I think, right?
Correct, I did.
Okay, very good. That's important for us because we get audited on that. I just want to thank John for taking on uh, this activity for the board. Alright, so the next item is the water board uh, has, in the water department as long as, and as well as our engineers have been putting together the um, EFC. The engineers have been working on the design for Contract Five. And uh, they've been meeting with the Environmental Facilities Corporation. We've got a long list of uh, required documentation and they accelerated the uh, the request for information. So usually we would give this information to them around October. They've asked for it by August because uh, they are in uh, they are so backed up uh, at the state level with their review, given the uh, work situation for so many of the employees. So that's being worked on, the USDA application. An application is being put together for a filtration plant uh, to see if we're, we can be eligible for grant funding to take care of that. Uh, and we uh, continue to work on the water board with issues uh, that surround uh, distribution of water. And uh, those items, the um, those maintenance items, those regular maintenance items that we have to take care of. Uh, and we also had a scare uh, where we thought that we were having a major leak. But it turned out that with the drought, uh, with the number of people who were filling up pools, that there was a large usage of water uh, in the last two months that um, caused us concern, uh, but that seems to have leveled out. So that's pretty much everything that was going on uh, with the water department and the water fund. Um, are there any items that you want to talk about for personnel, trustee Davis?
No, we really haven't had any personnel. We've had, you know, folks resign, but we haven't had, really had anything, so.
Okay. Alright, thank you. And then uh, as far as sewer, the sewer fund goes, the uh, village has been working with the town, not only on the intermunicipal connection of drinking water, but also with uh, the work that, we're very interested in reducing the number of sewer outfalls that go into Wappinger Creek because uh, our fecal coliform count has quadrupled since the nineteen ninety-nine Natural Resource Management Plan uh, sampling was done. So when we did the two thousand nineteen sampling, uh, we saw that the fecal coliform counts were um, four times as high as they were uh, when they were counted in nineteen ninety-nine. They were six times uh, too high. So this is just an incredible amount of uh, outfall that is, must be going in from septic systems, from sewer plants and as well as agricultural fecal coliform that might be coming into the system. So uh, for those reasons and as well as the phosphorus and the nitrates, we continue to try to uh, look at new ways of controlling it. The village met with the uh, a uh, representative of Biochar and we talked about using Biochar in a pilot project that would go along with the grant that we have from New York State to study uh, what the, what nutrients are coming downstream into Wappinger Lake. And uh, what we're looking to do is to use Biochar where a sewer outfall uh, to put it in contact with the, the effluent that's coming out of the sewer outfall and goes into the watershed. And to do sampling with that treated effluent to see if uh, Biochar does indeed work as they claim. And to use that evidence to encourage other sewer systems upstream to use Biochar as well as uh, possibly using it with other drainage systems that uh, also put uh, treated drainage or untreated drainage into the creek. So we would see how useful this would be as a treatment. Um, so the village of Wappingers Falls is working with the town of Wappinger on a uh, and as well as the town of Poughkeepsie on upgrades to the Tri-Municipal Sewer Commission's treatment plant uh, to see if it can increase the capacity at the plant so that we can divert some of these aging sewer systems and septic systems into uh, tri-municipal instead of having them treat and put out that effluent into the creek. So there's uh, going to be a map plan and report presented to Tri-Municipal Sewer Commission tomorrow morning at eleven o'clock. And we'll be taking a look at that to see uh, what they say. And we'll also be using that information in a future grant application with uh, the state for funding that would go for all three municipalities. So that's uh, some of the work that we've been doing with the sewer fund. We have Corey Yusovich on the call with our uh, grant, as our grant administrator and grant writer. And Corey, you want to address the board as far as what you've been working on for the village?
Yes, hello everybody. So a couple of things Matt just touched up on. USDA, as he said, we um, the village actually did their side. It's, it's all KC's hands now. But according to them, they're pretty ahead of schedule on it. So that should be getting done kind as soon as, definitely before the deadline. Tri-Muni, as he said, would, once they have that meeting and all, we hope to get a contractor hired and put that implemented either later this year or early next year, which would be really good. Tap has technically started on West Main, but obviously they haven't actually started construction yet. I, I guess apparently they're going to start next week, um, which will be inconvenient, but we do get better sidewalks out of it. Franny Reese Park, I'm sure most of you have passed it. They are working. They have the brick walls up now, which is looking actually pretty nice. So it's good to see progress there. Our EPA has been sent in. We're just waiting for feedback from them. And then our phase ones are done, which is some very minimal testing at our base. Sorry.
Could you describe uh, what the EPA grant is about?
Sure. So this is the uh, this is our brownfield grant. We have various properties throughout the village that we felt are potential to have contamination. That'd be Mill Street Parking Lot, Temple Field, Franny Reese originally, and the Bleachery. Franny Reese has been passed, no contamination, which is why construction's underway there. The other three have, well, I shouldn't say that. Mill Street and Temple have been shown to have contamination. Those phase ones are done. We're about to start phase two. The Bleachery, we had some trouble. I think I touched upon it last week. The EPA didn't know whether or not we had access to it. So we proved to them over the winter we did. And testing has now gone on there. We're about to finish phase one there. And we assume there's going to be contamination because it's Bleachery. Uh, and then at that point, phase two can begin, which is when they really start getting in, uh, testing it heavily and then hopefully starting to clean that stuff up. Uh, LWRP, which is with the water, Matt, again, touched upon that. We are hoping, assuming uh, testing goes alright with Biochar. We are considering uh, using some of our LWRP, incorporating Biochar into that project to help with funding. So we're going to put that at various uh, locations, money by sewer drains. If, again, if it is passing, goes underway to see if that maybe starts to clean up some of the water. But other than that, we have had a lot of back and forth with not only KC, but also members of the Wappinger intermunicipal watershed. And um, they, they have given really good feedback on this big list we're making for, for all of the municipalities to look into certain things to do. And so we still need to plan a meeting, uh, another public meeting for that. But hopefully that'll happen soon, whether it's in person or via Zoom. The boathouse, we did get word back from our, from the contractors we have onto it. We do have an additional supply that was considered, but for the initial price given was, it was, it was, it was going to be an extra eighty. We didn't want that. It's now in talks that it might not be that much. So we want to have a sit down with them and the architect and really hash out how much money it will be. I, if it's too much, we're just not going to go forward with it.
What was that for?
That is for the boathouse. We, we had a bit of what it was for, but again, we wanted, we want to sit down and really hash out what the additional money would be for before we even tell them to go forward with it. So, right, it was proposed and we want to really sit down with them and see what it will be for, if it's worth it. If it's eighty thousand, we probably won't go forward with it, but we.
What was it?
If we do end up bringing it back to the board, it would um, be something that the board would vote on and, and uh, look at. So it had to do with a change in the way. So it had to do with a change in the way that they did ventilation, cooling and heating.
Yes.
Fire system.
Uh other than that, we uh.
Back to the EPA for a second while you got a pause. What what was what was the footprint that they were looking at down there? At the Bleachery, the Bleachery.
The two buildings, one i- it's on the, I guess it'd be the south side, not Jack Fedigan's side. Um it it where the two buildings, one's still there, but one's not. They're kind of closest to the entrance to the right. I I don't have the, you know, the. But that's uh that's the section they're looking at, not they didn't go inside the buildings yet. But we do know the buildings, obviously there's no floor in there, so we want to test test in the buildings as well. Uh and then another thing would be, we want to make a PowerPoint for some of the various projects we are looking forward to doing. It might not be a PowerPoint. It might just be slides or things we put out. And we want to have either a public meeting or just simply again, send it out social media. Uh if people don't want to meet and get a sort of public synopsis on certain areas we want to work on. And get a feel for what the community would like to see in those areas. Uh you know, example would be Franny Reese, or not Franny Reese, Ballsview Park. For instance, we, you know, have a a concept for what we want, but of course, we want to get public input for those places. And so let, oh, so that's the PowerPoint. Lastly, I don't know if we talked about Bain. Oh, we did talk about Bain. Um how we put a down payment for the playground equipment. And um we're gonna store those and probably start setting up by next year so it can be used for the summer. And I think that's all I have for the past two weeks. Any uh any questions from anybody?
I have a question, Corey.
Yeah.
I just want, I just wanted to, Cindy Latino, I just want to clarify that we aren't storing that playground equipment. That was part of the uh purchase order agreement that we signed with uh Compact. They will not start to produce it until we're ready to take possession of it and install it. And that is one of the reasons for moving ahead on uh the purchase order and the ten thousand dollar um down payment on the equipment. Uh we should also just make everybody aware of the fact that this is a considerable savings for us by doing it. Um they are holding the two thousand nineteen price on that equipment as well as the price on the installation. And also on the shipping charges. So we would really appreciate if I think in the long run, it'll probably save us more like fifty thousand dollars.
I stand corrected, but that is really good to know. So thank you for that.
Okay, uh thank you, Corey. If there's no other questions, I'm gonna uh go back to the agenda. So we did talk about the public input uh meeting. You brought that up and um. Oh, we uh, I don't know, does um, anybody have uh, does anybody want to talk about the Wayfair signs that uh. Courtney is um has put together information about?
It's gonna be assigned to committee.
I kinda like the sign there.
Well, I mean, uh, does anybody, is anybody prepared to share? On that.
Well, I think there was survey put out. I don't know what the survey result was. I don't know who's running the operation. I know that it was, it was Courtney and um this should be assigned to a committee and it should be, you know, there should be. I think it needs further work. I don't have any objection to it, but somebody's got to be in charge of doing it and. Um it's gotta be be presented to this body, so I don't, I don't know where we go with it. I kind of, kind of lost there.
Okay, so let me uh show you what um we all got a, I'll do the thing then. So we all got a um. This shared to us from the group that is looking at this and this is uh something that's been. Uh we had applied for this uh last year. We had actually done some design work on this last year. We have the the. Uh so we applied for money from the Wappingers Greenway uh trail grant program. And uh we had hoped to get, I believe it was ten thousand dollars for uh the town of Wappinger. As well as ten thousand dollars for the village of Wappingers Falls. Uh we had talked about putting signs, uh a sign up at the train station telling people what um. With a map that showed people what was available and so uh. They are also looking and then what they want to do, this group wants to do is to pay for the signs with their donations. And so I believe they've gotten together and uh formed a group that is willing to put up donations. For a sign that would look something like this. Uh this is the sign uh that they have proposed. So you all should have a copy of this in your email inbox. So there's four. Categories that they look at around the map and they have to do with history, the business district, uh the falls. And a section called explorer, which has to do with the natural area around the village and the town. So the history section has this photograph. Homestead. And this write-up says the Wappinger Indians or eastern people lived along the eastern shore of the Hudson River. And the name Wappinger derives from the Latin word for opossum. In sixteen fifty nine, in the town, European settlers fleeing religious persecution from the Massachusetts Bay Colony. Established a small illegal encampment near where the Wappinger Creek flows into the Hudson River. And several months later were removed by the Dutch authorities. Nicholas and his father Adolphus Brewer, Dutch millers purchased over seven hundred acres of land near the Wappingers Falls in seventeen thirty eight. Nicholas built his small stone frame house later used by his son during the early years of the Revolutionary War. As a spy headquarters for the committee for detecting and it should say and defeating conspiracies. Uh I don't believe it's really a predecessor to the CIA because the CIA was started after World War Two. Uh the Wappinger Creek during this time was also a major port for ships and barges established by George Washington. For the Continental Army during the Revolutionary War. Nicholas Brewer sold his home in seventeen seventy six to Peter Mazzier, a New York City loyalist who conducted a store from his home. And charged a high price of tea. This sparked a three-day-long revolutionary protest in May of seventeen seventy seven. Known as the Wappinger Tea Party. The store's structure has been known for centuries as the Mazzier Homestead, ancestral home of the Mazzier family from seventeen seventy six to eighteen ninety one. Um so I I did reach out to the historic society and they um had not yet seen the actual write-up. But they are uh looking at it individually and they would like to comment on uh the facts that are stated here. And just make sure that they're ready to uh sign off on this. Um so it talks about the falls. And I believe this is the write-up for the falls. It's similar. And uh this is the explore section. It's a picture of a creek. Um. And uh I'm not sure where this is. Uh but it talks about um how you can explore the lower Wappinger Creek and uh fishing and boating. The waterfalls. And then it has a picture of Main Street. Uh and it says that the village center is made up of East and West Main Street. And it uh talks about that section as well. And then it talks about the style that we might like to see for the map and so um. Here is a map done by Brian Zikafus, who lives on West Main Street. He actually came to the village from West Virginia and he did this map called Welcome to Fayetteville, West Virginia. Uh however, the Wappingers Rises would prefer my hometown to be the prototype. Uh so this is a picture of where I'm from, on the beaches of Alabama with a more watercolor type version of the map. Uh which might be better for a watery area like the uh village of Wappingers Falls. And that's the whole presentation. So I think they're trying to collect uh any um comments that they'd like to get from the board. So what I think you should do is you should communicate those back to um. You should communicate those and copy uh the the um clerk. Communicate them back to Wappingers Rises and uh. With any comments that you have and maybe we could put them together and and see which ones we uh feel most strongly about. So uh they give us costs in the um package. It's not clear to me how that adds up, but uh they're they're saying that they would donate this anyway. I I think this is my understanding of what they're talking about here. Are there any uh, so I think I I love the maps and I love the idea of getting them out there. We agreed with this in uh September of twenty nineteen when we put the first application and so um. And are there any comments?
Um I I have, I just have a question. How many of these signs would uh, would they be produced?
They are talking about putting uh three signs up. Uh they said that the best places would be at the new parking lot at Franny Reese Park, the Mill Street parking area. Um and then they talked about the Mazzier Park, uh which we, the comment has already been made by both uh the village hall. And the um historic society that it would be better uh placed at Zion Park where there's less signage, less. Uh there's a war memorial, a bus stop uh across the street and um a flagpole and uh. There's a lot going on at that entrance. There's already a s- is an historic trail sign uh located at the library. So um. Stuff that already exists. And uh I I had also spoken with the business association and I think that they would be um happy to. Uh donate the map that they've already had produced for the village, um which uh we. I think we got to look at in July of uh twenty nineteen. So we already have uh done one map, but I. I uh, so I don't know. What they might do differently with um this new map and I think it's worth comparing the two and seeing if it's. If they're going to be donating it anyway to see what they are able to put together. But I'm open to hear whatever. Those are, those are my opinions, not my uh. Nothing else. Any other comments?
I like it. I mean, I I maybe, maybe we can put like, make it like a little informational booth. With it also. You can hang, you know, like notices of meetings and.
So I asked, I asked Courtney if that's what this was for and she said that this would not be for that. Um I think if we wanted to replace the information signage that we have up, uh that would be a different effort.
All right. Yeah, it's a, it's a great idea. I mean, I like the idea of it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, dear too. Um the the information um. I I I think I I get what you're saying, but I think if you have like just a separate thing that has information, it might be a little. It might be writ more because like putting information kind of next to this kind of sign with the map and everything, it might be a little too much. I don't know to to take in all at once, but I think, I think, I think the welcome to Wappinger signs is a very good idea.
Definitely.
I know that the owner of the um. Of the uh cinder block building on the corner of Market and East Main Street. Had offered up the space on the side of the building where the flags painted as a a possible location for signage or a mural. Uh so it's possible that there could be a large mural put on that side of the building that had exactly the same information. And then smaller signs throughout. Um so that was an I, an old idea. I don't bring that up to say that we should use that idea. I just say that that's already been something that uh was discussed in the past. Okay, so I'm uh thinking that you guys need time to digest what you see here. And so I think maybe you should take a look at it, make your comments and um. Or we could get together and uh maybe each ward's group of trustees could get together and come up with comments and. Get back to us or three of each of us could do the same. Um so I will uh leave it. Scott, do you want to take ownership of this? You're muted.
I said, no, I'm good.
You're good? Okay, so we'll see what you guys come back to me with and then uh we'll get back to the um. The group that presented this. Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you. And uh. I think that's everything. John, am I forgetting anything?
Uh that's it as far as the agenda, but I have a bargaining unit issue I'd like to discuss in executive session.
Okay, so um. Is there anything else that any trustees want to bring up at this time? Okay, I had asked uh earlier when we were talking about the um Mary Ross Park comments. If there was anybody that wanted to make public comments about the Mary Ross Park uh discussion. That we've been having over the last couple of meetings. Um so if there's anybody out there that joins the Zoom meeting specifically to make a comment. Uh I about Mary Ross or anything else, this is the time for open comments. But I just wanted to remind everybody that you could make a comment about the Mary Ross Park concept. And the idea of licensing it to a private business. So if you want to make a statement and you've joined us by Zoom, uh you've left YouTube, joined us by Zoom. And you're logged into this Zoom meeting, just uh unmute yourself and speak up and uh we'll recognize you, one of you. And uh one of you can speak at this time if anybody wants to make a public comment. The reason I'm taking so long is in case somebody's out there trying to log on to Zoom. So we're just giving everybody time to log on to Zoom to make comments. We do have a a couple of people on this Zoom call who are visiting us and there are what, there are viewers on YouTube. So if you're watching YouTube and you'd like to make a public comment, you should go to the village website, log on to the Zoom meeting. For July eighth, twenty twenty and you can come on here uh and make your presence known. Uh speak, unmute yourself and speak up if you would like to make a comment at this time. Log on to the Zoom meeting for July eighth, twenty twenty and you can come on here uh and make your presence known. And you can come on here, uh, make your presence known, uh, speak, unmute yourself, speak up. You would like to make a comment at this time.
Hold on, man. I'm trying to find the fucking thing.
Charlie, you're live.
Hey, am I on there?
Yeah, and you're, you're swearing in front of everybody in the village right now.
Okay. We're still here. Okay, hold on a sec.
Hold on, man. I'm trying to find the fucking thing.
Hey, bleep that. Okay, can you say, am I okay? Not the first time. Can you hear me now?
I can hear Charlie just.
Okay, hold on. I got nothing else open now. Can you hear me?
Okay, can you say, am I okay?
Okay, forget this.
Can you hear me now?
I, I think he's left the meeting. And we're just gonna give, uh, a second to see if anybody wants to log on to the. If you log on to the Zoom meeting, you should turn off your YouTube. So please turn off your YouTube if you log onto the Zoom meeting. So it should turn it off completely. Okay, we're just gonna give one more second and I'm gonna, uh, just try to find out if. Charlie would make to make a statement.
Okay, sorry about the confusion and the profoundly. But, uh. Were you still talking about the, um, Mary Ross Park?
Yes.
Okay, well, because you're kind of vague about what that's gonna be, but my. Question on that, is there gonna be alcohol out there in one of the hours of operation of the park? Or the restrictions on what hours it could be out there?
Yes, so there's, um, there was a list of times that we included. Uh, that we read at the last meeting. Did you get to see that?
I did see the last meeting, but it, it seemed like it was very preliminary, so I didn't really. Uh, you know, if there's something we could maybe look at and read or tell what's going on there.
Okay, so I, I read the times, um, and I could get them again. Hold on, uh. Okay, so, uh. The. Times that we read and that we're contemplating and seeking comment on right now. Or, uh, the use would allow, um, service from the, uh. The private business, uh, that's adjacent to this from one to eight P M on Sunday. Two to ten P M on Wednesday, two to ten P M on Thursday, five to midnight on Friday. And three to midnight on Saturday. Uh, it would not. Uh, they would not be allowed to restrict ass, access to customers only, nor would they be allowed to refuse. Uh, anyone to be allowed there unless of course somebody was, uh, creating a public nuisance. And in that case they would, uh, notify. The police.
And, and Mayor, is this a, a, a temporary agreement or is this something that's gonna be permanent?
So the, the idea is that the person, that the business would make permanent, uh. Improvements with, uh, value to them and they would look like the improvements that we showed on the video. At the, maybe two meetings ago and last meeting too. So we showed it two meetings ago and last meeting, uh, a video of the, uh, improvements that. He's contemplating making should the village, uh, agree to go into a license agreement with them. The P, the, the public would be allowed to use the, uh, seating area. During off-hours and during hours, uh. So that's the idea.
So I say, uh, the, the licensing agreement, is that gonna be restricted to, to only a point that they're back to a hundred percent? Capacity inside the business or is this licensing agreement going to exceed, you know, inter perpetuity? The, uh.
It would go past the COVID. Is that what you're ta- asking me? So it's intended to be a, a permanent, uh, addition to the. Fabric of the, the, uh, village center.
Okay, I, I think, uh, I'll, I'll give my opinion on that for what it's worth.
That's what.
Yeah, I, I think it's a mistake to, to make it go past the COVID, uh, restrictions. Because first, for one thing, you don't know how long that's, business is gonna be and what's gonna be placed it. I think it's a very prominent place in the village and to have that be a bar, a place with people drinking liquor. As people drive through Main Street, I, I think you're taking a big risk on turning a piece of parkland over to a potential bar business. Uh, for, forever. I could see making the sacrifice while, you know, we want our businesses to make money during COVID. But I think once COVID is over, that property goes back a hundred percent of the village with no outside liquor license.
Mayor, if I, if I could. Make a comment on that.
Okay, Craig, or just let me, or Charlie, are you done? For now, you can make another comment.
Uh, yeah, I am.
Okay.
Well, keep in mind, and I say this, um, given the fact that, uh, I, I do have a conflict with this particular applicant. But I can say in general, um, once, um, COVID and, you know, once the outdoor. Dining, um, is, is relaxed and all those regulations are over with. You're gonna have a, a changeover back to S L A. And S L A is gonna be governing all of these particular restaurants, uh, as licensees. So, once that happens, you're gonna now have, um, you know, everybody back under the same rules. And they're going to have to enlarge their license, uh, and, and they're gonna have to be, uh, you know. Make sure that they get that approved by S L A. So they'll be under the, uh, the jurisdiction of S L A. So there, there, it, that would be under, uh, uh, actually outside of, uh, the village. Villages hands at that particular point in time. So, you know, the applicant will always have to deal with S L A. And, and their rule regulations and oversight.
So that, the, the, uh, business that's asking if we would enter into this arrangement understands that. And they're, um, trying to find out what that. Might look like with S L A before. They, um, spend any money on building the improvements to that park that they have proposed.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I, I just think why not just put it in the agreement because.
Oh, it will be, it will be, the S L A requirements will be in the agreement.
Okay, and then the, uh, the, the permanent use of that park, at some point, I think the village should be getting rent money for it. You're thinking a public park, making it quasi, uh, private. Then there should be some arrangement in the future after COVID for a, a monthly fee for, for the village. We're giving up a piece of our public land for a private business.
So there is a, so there does, uh, it did contemplate that. Uh, what it says is, you know, it depends on how much we estimate the value of the, um, improvement to be. It could be somewhere between fifteen thousand to forty thousand dollars if, um. And the, the, the way it's proposed right now is that that would be amortized. Over a, uh, I believe it's a ten-year period, but the idea was that it be amortized over a stated number of years. And I think it's a ten-year period and that after that ten-year period, there would be a, uh, fee owed to the village.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, alright, thank you for your comments, Charlie.
Which comments?
All, all of them. Not all of them, I forgot. The other was already.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, uh, any other discussion? Any other comments from anybody here on the Zoom meeting?
Matt?
Yes.
It's Cindy Latino and not, not talking from recreation, although I can speak from that point of view as well. But speaking on behalf of the Wapingers Falls Business Association, uh, we, uh. We think that this is a, a great opportunity to really make that four-corner area look spectacular. I think, you know, I think we've been able to see that Divine's been able to do something outside and it's been very well handled. And, um, you know, I think, uh, we do have that kind of a commitment from Vinyl Room to do the same thing. It's a very underutilized park right now. It's overgrown and, and honestly, it's difficult to maintain. Um, so this would be a, a great opportunity for us to have something looking better in our downtown. And I think more of our residents would utilize the park once it's fixed up. So, you know, and again, as I said, I'm speaking on behalf of the, of the Business Association, saying that we think it's, it's a, a really. A great opportunity for a public-private, um, partnership. And we hope that the village will seriously consider moving forward with this because we do think it'll be a great thing for the village.
Cindy, um, I like to say something. I totally agree with you. It changes the whole aspect of that corner. Right now, it's basically used for people walking their dogs. And it's, it's just not used the way it should be. And with us being so short on, uh, places for the restaurants to, you know, uh, serve the, the people. I think it's a great idea and, and we're utilizing something that is just dead space right now. Thank you.
I, um, uh, Brian Lamis, um, just walking through the village. I mean, I didn't realize that that was actually a park, um, until you look really, really close. I think the design, I, I, again, I'm agreeing with, with you all. It really would. And the fact that, you know, we would, we as village residents would be able to use it and have a nice place. I could take a walk there. Sit down for a minute, then maybe go down to the creamery, get some ice cream, you know, um. I think, I think it's a good use of that space, especially if it's, if it can work out, uh, that, uh, Vinyl Room is gonna. You know, work in partnership. I think it's kind of what it's all about.
Okay, well, we're, we're, uh, we will continue to get, um, people's opinions on this. And we should leave ourselves open to, uh, everything that the public says over the next, the, these past three meetings. And the next meeting that we have on this. So, um. I think, uh, it, is, is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up at this time? If there's not, I'd like to ask if we could get a motion to go into executive to discuss the bargaining unit, uh, contract issues. That we have.
I'll make it.
Make a motion to go into executive to discuss bargaining unit?
Yes.
Okay, and a second? Seconded by trustee Marka John. Favor? Okay, and, uh, we may be coming back out of executive after this, uh, to vote.